Good evening. I'd like to call the July 31st, 2025 North Hills Board of Education Committee Meeting with Action to Order. Please rise for a moment of silence and salute to the flag.
Flag allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to announce that tonight's meeting is being recorded and broadcast live on North Hills School District's YouTube page. Images may also be posted on district's social media, and I believe we have Mr. Santucci participating via phone tonight, so I just want to confirm that you can hear us, Mr. Santucci.
That is correct, Madam President. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right, and we will, I'm sorry. Are there any other board member comments this evening?
I just wanted to acknowledge and thank all of the staff from the district that have put on summer reading and math programs and camp kindergarten. I appreciate all of the hard work they're putting in over the summer and making that extra effort to make sure our kids stay ready and get ready for school.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I actually have two community comments to make. One is a more solemn thing. Thoughts and very positive thoughts to the Manfred family. Two graduates, Tori played basketball and Tyler was the North Hills goalie for ice hockey, and their mother unexpectedly passed from something that happened during a surgery, and so thoughts are with them. Literally happened yesterday. And secondly, to keep it on a more positive note, because how do you go from that to into the school board meeting, congratulations to Ms. Mathis. It was an honor to see you compete at the city's major competition called Picklesburg. You did us very well, and it was very prideful to see you compete.
Thank you very much, and you did an amazing job emceeing the event. Dr. Manarino, now you can get up and give us your superintendent's report, please.
Okay. All right, so this is a lot of back-to-school fun stuff because it's back-to-school time. Unfortunately, tomorrow is August, so here we go, folks. Opening day for teachers and for our staff is August 12th, and then that's going to be good probably at 8:00 for those of you that are going to join us. First day of school for our students is August 20th, and that's a Wednesday that is also the first day of school for Beatty, which makes it easy for Beatty students who attend the high school that their schedules line up this year. With that being said, orientations, we roll right into those, and our ninth grade orientation is Thursday at 9:00 a.m., and again at 5:00 p.m., and then Monday the 11th at 1:00 for any students new to the high school and our ninth graders. Our middle school orientations begin on Monday at 1:00. Our students with last names A through L, and at 4:00, our M through Z. And then for seventh and eighth grade, new student orientation is the 11th at 9:00 a.m., and for any sixth graders who are unable to attend on the 4th, they can also join us on the 11th. Elementary new student orientation for grades 1 through 4 is Thursday, the 14th at 4:00, and then kindergarten parent orientation is Monday evening, August 18th at 5:30, followed by kindergarten student orientations on Wednesday, the 20th, and Thursday, the 21st, as we sort of soft-open for our kindergarten students. So that's the beginning of the school stuff that's really important. Once school begins, we've got open house and curriculum nights that happen for us, so open house at the high school for grades 9 through 12 is Wednesday, the 27th, starting at 6:30. AW Beatty's back-to-school night is Thursday, the 28th. That begins at 5:15. The middle school open house is September 3rd from 6:00 to 8:00, and then our elementary curriculum night for grades 1 through 5 is Thursday, the 21st at 5:30. And one of our favorite events in the fall is our Fall Sports Community Pep Rally, and that is Monday, August 18th at 7:00 p.m. at Martorelli Stadium. So with the beginning of the year and a couple of years ago, we shifted digitally for all of those fun forms that used to come home in backpacks, and we're going to be able to stay true to that again. So those need to be completed as soon as you can. I believe we're at 30% completion already, so that's good news. So your student information, health information, permissions agreements, network information, device use, all that fun stuff is online. Good news about the student contacts, and the good news isn't that it's not numbered correctly, it's that there's a new feature to it. There are separate, the separate form now is available that you can update that throughout the year. So if your phone number changes, or your email address changes, or your contacts change, or whatever it might be, you now don't have to go through a process at the office with the secretaries. You can do that right online for us, which is really nice. So it's important to complete this. The biggest thing that it's important for is emergency situations. That information has to be accurate in our system in the event we would have an emergency, we need to contact anybody. That's our biggest need for this information. So please get that information filled out. The health information is extremely important to our nurses so that we can make sure that we have all of the needs of our children addressed whenever they arrive. So if you can get to that, that would be great. Student releases schedules for the high school and the middle school is tomorrow, so that's tomorrow. We will open those, go live. You can see your teacher's period classroom. All of those assignments will be available tomorrow for your middle school and high school students. Elementary students will be able to have theirs available to them on Monday, August 11th. Once again, we're using School Dismissal Manager, which is an important way for you to be able to tell us that your student is going to be late, get an early dismissal, absent for the day, any changes that might need. So again, this is also where the need to have the information correct in power school comes in. So once again, with School Dismissal Manager, we're going to use that again this year, and this also replaces the old-school written note that you used to rip off half a piece of paper and send it into your homeroom teacher that they were absent yesterday. You can do all of that through School Dismissal Manager. All of those details are also on our website. Laptops and iPads. High school students can pick up their laptops beginning on Monday from 9:00 to 11, and from 1:00 to 3:00, and then Thursday, Friday, and the following Monday at those times available. Note that our parents can come pick up the devices. The students don't have to pick them up, but there's nothing, we need them to touch them, or open them, or log in. So if your child is not available to pick them up at this time, but you can as a parent, come get them, because I really hope that all of our students get them before the first day of school. I think it's really important because we are going to use them on the first day of school, so please get them before that, because if you haven't had a chance to pick it up in these dates, you will get them at the beginning of the school year out of the library, but that's going to take us a little bit more time, as you know how opening day is a little bit crazy. Good? So parents, if your child can't come get it at that time, you're more than welcome to come pick up that device. Elementary and middle school students are getting new iPads this year. We traded in the iPads that we had previously that we purchased in 2020, so they are getting a new model. If you're looking to get accessories for that, it is an A16, as they're replacing generations and that type of thing. So this is an A16 iPad, 128-gig device. It will come with a cover and a bumper pad, as the other ones have in the past as well, to protect it. Those will be distributed during the first week of school, out of their schools, in their homeroom. There's nothing that the parents or the children have to do in order to get their device at the elementary and the middle school. It's only the high school that they have to pick them up. Highly recommend insurance for the device, particularly the new iPad. That's really important here. So insurance begins here. The cost is $35. That is unchanged. Students on free and reduced lunch, it is free. Families are liable for all damage, repairs, costs, accidental damage, all of it, so please, get insurance if you can. You have to enroll the device in one to risk. That is the insurance company. You have to enroll the device, and then you have to decide whether you want the insurance or decline the insurance. So parents who get free and reduced lunch, enroll the device. We already know you're free and reduced lunch. It'll take care of it from there. Okay? So any questions? There's a link there for our website as well. Now is also the time to get your parking pass for students who are looking to drive to campus. Again, you can complete that online. It is $50. No increase to the cost of that as well, and there's a link that you can apply and submit payment online this year, and so the link is right there as well. And then it's pretty exciting as we get to next week. Wednesday, August 6th, is Westview's grand reopening, which is really neat because the building originally was opened in 1925, and we're going to grand-reopen that in 2025, which is pretty neat. We're going to have ribbon-cutting and tour for those of you who have not seen the inside of the building, and you have not, because you did not get to see the decals and the decorations that are in that building now. So if you saw it before, you saw it with just the original paint job, and now you get to see what it looks like, because this building was about the history of Westview, the history of Pittsburgh, the history of the district. So it is really neat. When you go in there and you see the photographs and the things that they put together to bring the history of the area alive, it's pretty awesome. So I can't wait for people to come in from 6:00 to 8:00, check it out, walk around, see what this new building looks like, because it is pretty awesome. So tonight, on the agenda, we have some facility use policies, and I wanted to just call out a few things in those policies in case there's any questions from anybody before we get to that section. So there's two policies that we had that were about use of school facilities and use of athletic facilities. We're merging them into one policy, 707, catchy title, too, Use of School Facilities and Athletic Fields. So what we basically did in Policy 707 is we established four user groups, and we updated the fee schedule, which we do annually. That part's not new. But the four user groups are simply put as Category 1 groups. That's the North Hills School District athletic teams, student groups, club sports, activities, and then the board-recognized PTO, AOSO groups are all in Category 1. Category 2, the easiest way to look at this, is those are our youth sports organizations, youth sports groups in Ross and Westview that have 85% of their participants from our area. So I wanted to highlight this new part, that as we were kind of going through some things in the spring, I started to learn about some things that we could actually do better to help some of our youth sports programs. And I'm not calling out lacrosse, but lacrosse was one that we ran into a problem with, because they will sit for their schedule, like maybe in October or November, but they don't need the facility until March or April. So we put a plan in place that, look, we know that they're going to schedule our facility for their practices and our events, but the way we had the original window, they couldn't schedule that until like February. But they were meeting for a scheduling meeting in November, so they had to do everything tentative with the other areas that they were scheduling with. Scratch that. It's not going to help them. We know they need to use our facility, so we're going to have a season agreement that they could do for us, or with us. And that's just basically, hey, we need you this season. We're going to need these types of Saturdays and Sundays, or whatever it might be. Go ahead and schedule. Get that done in October and November, whenever you meet with your league to schedule, and then come in and we'll put everything into the system. And so that's something that I think we put together to help them, because in the past, they would go to the scheduling meeting and be like, yeah, we can tentatively agree to that, but we can't agree to it until the window opens up for them to schedule in our system. So hopefully, we fix that for them. And I know soccer does the same thing, but those organizations that are using our outside facilities in the spring actually schedule in the fall. So hopefully, this helps to then open up our scheduling system, because in the past, the only choice they had was to blank everything out and then just take the ones that they needed later. So hopefully, this makes it a little bit easier in the system, because then they can just schedule the ones they need based upon what they scheduled. So that's new to that category. I wanted to make sure everybody understood that. Category 3 is the same group, but these are for-profit groups that exist in this area, and then Category 4 is everybody that doesn't fit into the other three categories. And then the fee structure is built based upon which category you're in. So for Category 2, you can see there are no fees with the exception of the Guadino Field that's here in Martorelli Stadium. The asterisks on there are about lights. Those two facilities have lights. Lights are an additional charge if you want to have a night event. That's what those asterisks mean. Also with that, real quick, like we put a curfew in to both sites, so because I would believe that baseball will be prominently played here at night, there's a curfew. No inning can begin after 10:00, and there is a 10:30 end of game. So that's how it's going to work, so that the lights aren't on here all night. This is not a 24-hour facility, just because it has lights. We also have heard from some people that would like to schedule a season here, so that's why that's highlighted in yellow, because it's a little bit different, because everything else is by hour, except that yellow band, that's by game. And so if we have a local organization that wants to schedule their entire season here, they can do that. So that's how the fee structure is set up. This is under buildings and grounds. The policy is under policies. And then the last thing I have is on the agenda tonight is three agreements that we've worked through with the foundation, and the foundation has established three community partnerships this year, and those three partnerships are with Frank's Chicken and Pizza, Good Lovin' Cookies, and Westview Brew, and each of them are going to work with us throughout the year to make donations to the foundation to help benefit our students and our staff, which I think is awesome. And so new Frank's Chicken and Pizza is a North Hills-themed pizza called the Scholar. It's on their special menu, and it is available beginning tomorrow. And so for every scholar that's purchased, they will donate $2 to the North Hills Foundation, and they will also be sponsoring a reading program in our elementary schools to help students reach some reading goals, and for every time the student reaches a goal, they will provide them with a four-cut pizza. It's a really good pizza. It's chicken and roasted red peppers, so it's interesting. We had it today for our Administrative Council lunch, and the administrators seemed to like it, so hopefully, this pizza takes off in the North Hills community, because everyone they sell, they're going to donate $2 to the foundation, which I think is great. Good Lovin' is going to do a themed cookie, available beginning tomorrow, August 1st, and 50 cents for each one of those cookies sold will be donated to the foundation. And then Good Westview Brew is hosting Foundation Friday each week, and they will have specialty items, whether it's a coffee, or a pastry item, or both, and for every one of the North Hills Foundation items that are sold, they're going to donate a dollar to the foundation, and on Fridays, you can round up your check to the next dollar, and those cents will be donated to the North Hills Foundation. So we established three community partnerships to help us move forward with our goal to provide scholarships and grants to students and teachers.
Thank you. I don't believe we have anybody signed up for public comment. We do? We do not. Okay. Then we are going to move on to new business, and the first piece of new business is something I am very excited about. Dr. Manarino just talked about. It's those three agreements. One is with Westview Brew, one is with Frank's Chicken and Pizza, and one is with Good Lovin'. And though these were agreements that are going to benefit the foundation, there's overlap between the foundation and the district, and the district is going to be meeting parts of the agreements as well, like a certain amount of promotion for each sponsor through our social media channels, et cetera. So that's why these agreements have been approved already by the partners, and they've been approved by the foundation boards, so now we're asking the school board to approve them. So the superintendent recommends, and I so move, that the board approve new business items 1 through 3. Thank you, Mrs. Spade. Is there any discussion? I would just like to say thank you to these sponsors. This is a new program that we're doing with them, and I'm really, really, really excited about it. I can't wait to see what the North Hills Cookie of the Week is going to be, and the Coffee Specials, and Everybody Loves Pizza. So I hope a lot of people from our community patronize these businesses, and that this will be a great start of new partnerships for us going forward. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will move on to me with education. The education liaisons will be meeting with Dr. Williams on Monday to get started on the school year, so I don't have any other reports for that at this time, but I would like to hand it over to Dr. Williams for a presentation and educational update.
Good evening. Just a couple of quick things to note. June was a very busy year, even though school was not in session and teachers weren't here, because that is when we do our curriculum revisions or rewrites. So in the month of June, we had approximately 115 courses addressed through revisions or edits or new courses that were proposed and written, which was a total of 1,500 curriculum hours written by our teachers. So they did a really nice job, and that happens for a variety of reasons. The standards changed. We have purchased more curriculum information that we use in the classes and things such as that, or we're taking a look at the scope and sequencing. So as you can see, all the different departments that participated, so I'm very excited about that and very appreciative to the teachers. They worked very hard on that. Next, I know I spoke about this last year, but just a reminder, this year, the PSSAs in Keystone are all digital formats, so all the testing will be digital. We did practice that last year. We did the science testing for the PSSAs in 5th grade and 8th grade digitally last year, as well as the winter algebra, or the winter retest in both Algebra ELA and Biology last year. So that will shorten the length of the tests that the students will take, and we should get the results a little bit sooner, so just to put that back on everyone's radar. And then last but not least, the Math Task Force will have its first meeting of the school year on Monday, September 8th. We'll begin to look at our data from last year's school year, and then identify things that we're doing well, take a look at some areas that we need to continue to really focus on, and then start to discuss any next steps that we would have. So it's going to be a great year. Thank you.
Well, you just bade my night by reminding me that we have a Math Task Force meeting, because you know that I love the Math Task Force. So thank you, Dr. Williams. We have several items for consideration this evening under education. The first is a request that the board approved to send myself, Samantha Elwood, Sandy Cozera, and Ashley Stevens to the 2025 PSBA Leadership Conference, October 19th through 21st, at the Calahari Resorts and Conventions in the Poconos. Some relevant facts here. Board members will be able to benefit from keynote speakers, educational sessions, exhibitors, and opportunities to network with colleagues. All board members are welcome to attend, but in order to minimize the budget impact, it's recommended that we send no more than four. Board members will share the information with the administration and the board upon return. The delegate assembly is in person this year at that conference, and Mrs. Elwood, Ms. Cozera, and Mrs. Stevens have been appointed by this board as voting delegates, and will be representing our district. That delegate assembly will be occurring in person on Tuesday, October 21st, at 2:30 p.m., immediately following the conference. And the North Hills Jazz Band will also be at the conference, performing before the closing keynote this year, so we're excited about that. In terms of budget impact, there will be no cost for me to attend the conference, because I am the acting president of the PSBA Governing Board. There will be some minimal charges for Ms. Elwood, Ms. Cozera, and Mrs. Stevens, which are detailed, conference registration, lodging, mileage, and we will all carpool as we're able, and then meal reimbursement alignment with the district policy. The next item that I have is a request for the board to approve the dual enrollment agreements with Community College of Allegheny County, LaRoche University, Robert Morris University, Seton Hill University, and the University of Pittsburgh, which are attached. The agreements with Carlo and Point Park University were signed last year as two-year agreements, and therefore did not require signed contracts this year. Up next, I have a request for the board to approve the disposal/donating/selling of elementary musical textbooks, marching band uniforms, and electric pianos as per Policy 722. The textbooks are outdated, and a replacement curriculum has been purchased. The marching band uniforms that are being disposed of are damaged and no longer usable, and three electric pianos are non-functional and cannot be used for classroom instruction. Replacement pianos have been purchased. Next, I have a request for the board to approve the KD Quiz Grant funded by GBU Life in the amount of $2,500. The intended use of this grant is to fund high school gifted program expenditures. Details are attached. I have a request for the board to approve the People's Security Bank and Trust grant funding to the district in the amount, district, excuse me, in the amount of $10,000. This grant is a part of Pennsylvania's EITC program, in which participating companies receive tax credits for providing funding to eligible entities, and the money will be applied towards the purchase of iPads as part of the grades K through 8 instructional technology equipment refresh, ensuring that every student has an iPad for educational purposes. And my last item is another grant. This is a request for the board to approve a monetary donation from Parents as Allies allocating grant funding to McIntyre Elementary in the amount of $3,000. Parents as Allies is part of the Kidsburg Initiative that is designed to help build strong school-family partnerships and collaboratives. The McIntyre team consisting of staff, administrators, and parents determined that they want to focus on the incoming kindergarten families for 2025, 2026, as a result of information collected from incoming kindergarten families. The results of this survey and direct feedback from parents indicated a need to provide a space and time to allow families to connect with school and staff and each other, while having an opportunity to ask questions prior to the orientation events in late August. So there will be a pizza and popsicles event on the playground, and there will be some activity stations there as well. There is no negative budget impact on the district. I move that education items 3 through 8 be added to the legislative meeting agenda. Is there a second? Thank you, Mrs. Spade. Any discussion on any of those items? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and Mr. Little, I'll turn it over to you for athletics and activities.
No report this evening, Madam President. Thank you.
Okay. Then we will move on to Ms. Cozera for policies.
Thank you. I have a few policies to review tonight for first reading. The first one is a first reading for Policy 626, Federal Fiscal Compliance. These are, I believe, PSBA suggested changes based on changes to the law. Is that correct, Dr. Manarino? They're specific to audit cybersecurity protections and reporting violations. The next one is a new policy, 626.1, Travel Reimbursement for Federal Programs. This indicates that the, and if there are any district employees or, you know, board members who receive federal awards, we, this district will reimburse any travel associated with, you know, complying with those federal grants. I don't, we don't expect that that would be something that would happen very often, but it is, you know, legal requirement, so we're putting that policy in place. The next one is a first reading for revisions to Policy 707, which is the Use of School Facilities and Athletics Field Policy that Dr. Manarino just talked about earlier, so I won't discuss that any further, but as part of that, the next action item is Retiring Policy 711, which was specific to the use of school athletic fields. So among the changes that we talked about are, we combined the facilities and athletic fields into one policy. The last item is the first reading of a new policy, Policy 827, Conflict of Interest, my favorite topic. So this new policy is, it's not anything new in that, in that there, it basically puts into policy what state law is that governs our employees and our board members as far as what we can and cannot do as, you know, district employees or board members. And it codifies a little bit of like what would, what the procedure is for identifying and reporting a violation of any potential conflict of interest policy. So this is something that we, you know, kind of thought that while it's something that we're all kind of generally familiar with, it was a good idea to put it into a policy so that it's very clear to all employees, all board members, and to the public what, you know, what the rules are that are surrounding our roles here. And Dr. Manarino, do you have anything that you want to add to that, or is that?
No, you're right on. These are all recommended by PSBA, so I think it's a good thing for us to have them on. I know the title ones that you did at the beginning, those are, those will be audited to make sure that we have those policies, in particular, when we're getting federal funds. So it's important for us to have those. So yeah, I don't think there's anything major that, we've been following these either in a guideline or just by law.
Right.
So when the PSBA PNN came out, it suggested that these should be policy, and that's why.
Okay. So I move that items 2 through 6 under the policy be added to the legislative meeting agenda.
Is there a second?
Dee Spade, I'll second it.
Thank you, Mrs. Spade. I will start the discussion. I had a question about two points in Policy 827, Conflict of Interest. I think they're minor points, but I just, it's, there's a line in there that says "No board member or district employees shall accept an honorarium," and I just felt like that's a little vague, like I didn't know if that needed some more definition or fleshing out. Go ahead.
And I was working through the PSBA for this, and it almost, it would be okay if we removed it. No board member receives an honorarium. You're not paid to do your job, and you know, it's, I don't even know.
I mean, I don't have a problem with it per se. I just didn't know what it means.
When I, when I read it, I realized, you know, that the general term would be you accept some sort of cash or something in exchange for speaking in an event or something like that.
Okay.
Related to your position. I've never known of any board member. It's been paid to speak at a function or anything like that, so.
No, I've definitely not financially profited from this position. Okay, so my other question was that there's a line in the policy about disciplinary actions being taken for board members, and this sort of lumps board members and employees into one line item together, and I just wasn't sure, like, what that means. Like, I feel like there are limitations to how you can discipline a board member, so I wasn't sure if that should be separated out and handled differently between board members and employees, or what the definition, or how a board member would be disciplined.
And in the comment that you put in the policy, I think if we added a line, like, that said, where it says violations of this policy may result in disciplinary action for employees, and it spells it out, could we do the line sort of like violations resulting in disciplinary action for board members? resulting in disciplinary action for board members shall be applicable by law?
Yeah.
So whatever the, because you could censor a board meeting, but that's pretty much it.
Right.
So if we added a, a line like that at the end, because it, it's under disciplinary actions and then it has employees, if we had another paragraph that said something similar to that for board members, could we add that and still prove it as a second reading or should we table this, do it as a first reading at the next meeting, and then approve it at the September meeting? Because I think that line needs to be in there.
That would be the best way of doing it.
Okay.
The second way?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Can I revise my motion then?
Yeah, you'll want to do two through five.
Two through five. I move that items two through five under policy be added to the legislative meeting agenda. And do I need to move to table item six or?
I think so.
Okay, as a separate motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
We can do this separately.
First motion. I move that items two through five under the policy be added to the legislative meeting agenda.
Is there a second?
D. Spade, I'll second that.
Thank you, Mrs. Spade. Is there any other discussion on these items two through five? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Sandy?
I move that item six under policy be tabled and that's it, I guess, and we'll bring it up next week. Yep.
Table a motion, do you just need a second or do we?
You need a second.
Just--
Mm-hmm.
I will second that.
Okay.
And that's it?
Okay.
You should vote, you should vote.
That's what I was asking.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. You said a second. I need a second.
Okay. I, I thought to table a motion, you just needed a second, that you didn't need to vote on it. But anyway, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay. That will be tabled then. Sorry for the confusion on my part. Mrs. Neese will be handling buildings and grounds tonight at Mr. Santucci's request since he's participating remotely.
Okay. So the first thing is that the board approved the bid for four hundred cases of paper towel and four hundred cases of toilet tissue with dispensers to DH Berthenthal and Sons for $15,316 and $17,592. The bids were advertised as required and bid invitations were shared with current and historical suppliers. Bids were publicly opened on July tenth, 2025. Six responses were received and reviewed by the supervisor of Custodial Services. Some other important information, DH Berthenthal and Sons were the lowest bidder for each item, and please reference the bid tabulation attached for complete results. The cost of these supplies as bid were included within the 2025-2026 budget. The next thing is that the board ratified the awarding of the bid for replacement of fencing at Westview Elementary to the lowest bidder, Penn Fencing, in the amount of $59,697.73. The invitation to bid was advertised as required and shared with interested suppliers. Bids were open June nineteenth, 2025. Two responses were received. The existing fencing at Westview was beyond its useful life and in disrepair. Replacement was more economical and promotes safety for the students. The budget impact for replacing the fencing is being funded through the bond proceeds that were issued in 2023, in part for the Westview Elementary renovation project. And the last thing is that the board approved the facility's use fee schedule per the attached. And that is that. And I move that items two through four under buildings and grounds be added to the legislative meeting agenda.
Sarah, second?
I'm D. Spade, I'll second that.
Thank you, Mrs. Spade. Any discussion on any of those items? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Neese, and you will continue on with community and intergovernmental relations.
Big night for me.
Your shining moment.
So, so many words. We did meet with the PTO and PTO and PTSO groups this week, and Dr. Manarino actually covered a lot of what we discussed. But Camp Kindergarten was very successful again. The summer reading and math groups had two hundred kids that participated, which is awesome. I love that our district does that. And then check for all the back-to-school socials. All of the groups have lots of really fun activities and food planned for the kids. And the last thing, the first date for the climate and culture council meetings, I always get that wrong. It will be September fifteenth at Westview. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Neese. Mrs. Elwood, you are up with finance.
Thank you very much. So tonight I have a couple items for consideration. They are the general fund bills, the capital project fund bills, food service fund bills, payroll for the month of June 2025, and July 2025. And then we have a couple other items for consideration. The first is the ratification of matching funds commitment. So the recommended action is that the board ratify the district matching funds commitment as outlined in the attached letter. The district has an opportunity to pursue partial funding in the amount of $244,569, representing seventy percent of the estimated project cost for the slope excavation, slope stabilization, and erosion in sediment controls at Martorelli Stadium. The cost estimate for this project totals $349,835 per the attached. The grant funding is contingent upon the district committing a local match of thirty percent of the estimated cost. Related to the financial impact, the district will use $104,816 from the capital projects fund to fulfill the commitment of a thirty percent local fund match. To follow that up, the next would be that the board ratify Resolution 2025 dash zero three, authorizing the district to file a Commonwealth Financing Authority Multimodal Transportation Fund Grant Request with the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development. The district, that, it's the same opportunity we previously discussed. This resolution, though, formally authorizes the pursuit of this grant and designates Dr. Manarino and Mr. Muth as the officials to execute the documents and agreement between the district and, and the Commonwealth Financing Authority to facilitate and assist in attaining the requested grant. Additional information is attached, and the budgetary impact is the same as the previous stated, $104,816 that will come from the capital project funds. So I make a motion to add items two through seven to the legislative meeting agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
D. Spade, I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I am an aye for everything, but I need to personally abstain from check seven-nine-six-seven-eight under the general fund bills.
I am also an aye for everything but check number seven-nine-six-seven-eight under the general fund bills.
Okay. Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Elwood. Mrs. Stevens, do you have a health and wellness report this evening?
No report this week. Everybody have a healthy remainder of your summer.
Great, thank you. And Mrs. Spade, you are up with personnel and legal.
Personnel items, wait a minute, personnel and legal items are discussed in executive session. Superintendent recommends and I so move that the board approve items one through six.
Thank you. Is there a second?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Little. All in favor?
Aye.
I am a yes for everything except for item number one under appointments. I'm abstaining from that vote.
Okay, thank you. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Mrs. Rennebeck, do you have any updates for A.W. Beatty this evening?
We've been on summer break. We have a meeting in mid-August and hopefully I will, not hopefully, I, we will have something to report after that.
Okay, great. And with no other business this evening, I will just announce that we will be meeting again next week, which is somehow Thursday, August seventh already. That seems wrong to me. But right here at the North Hills Middle School, LGI Room at 6:15 PM, and I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody.